You say 5:15?
I said 5 o'clock.
Okay.
And Dr. Green said he was hopping in, but I don't see him, so.
Okay, well, I want to go ahead and get started. I am going to go liberties with the.
I'm not avoiding you, I just need power.
So.
I'm happy to power share.
But I, it was night, last night Herman was gone, so I had tons and tons of space on the dais. So now I'm just used to having a big desk.
Oh my God, I was like so cramped.
Oh, I was going to accuse you of stealing Michelle's thing that she couldn't find as a joke, but I didn't, I didn't know who would play off as funny, so I didn't say it. But she's like, we didn't find it, like, Juliet probably took it.
I have kind of my Barry Ginnis house.
Just because we sat next to each other, I was constantly stealing your stuff last year. Year before last.
I know, but you don't have a packet anymore.
I know, so it's less likely to steal.
So just in terms of what I really want to make sure that we have Michelle part of is, so I'm going to, I'm going to start with item number three, the racial equity policies, which is just set aside 10 minutes for that. And then I do want to have a brief, on the record discussion about the climate crisis committee application. And this committee is not approving it or anything, so it's not like we have a vote. But I think, Michelle, we're, once you have laid in any edits or comments you have, I think everybody will have weighed in. So we should, we should be able to get it to a final and then get it moving out to all of the constituencies we'd like to, so that I want to cover that while you're on. And also, in the order, and then the parent fundraising, Jonathan and I have an update. And then the citizen involvement, and then everything else. So we'll see if we can get that done. Do you, are you comfortable starting off with sort of what you, the update you wanted to give to the committee on the racial equity policies review?
So about a month or two ago, I can't remember, I shared that I wanted to look at our racial equity policy and see if it could be strengthened. I did that because I got some free help in doing so from an educational consultant and another school district outside of Atlanta, a school board member outside of Atlanta that are part of the school board partners network. And you shared with me the suite of policies, our racial educational policy, our policies around hate speech. And we combed, the three of us combed through those racial equity policies. And the finding was, not surprising, that our, our policies were very strong. Where we could improve is in actually. Where we could improve is in actually, one of the policies, I believe it's the racial educational policy, asks for, or requires an annual update from the superintendent. And so, you know, we've been in the pandemic mode for a couple of years and we haven't done that, but good news, we are going to have it by the end of this year. So it's, our policies are strong and stronger than in many districts that are within school board partners network, and we need to enforce our own policies.
So, Michelle, you say this year, is that this calendar year or this school year?
This school year. I believe in a, I just saw it today, and Roseanne can confirm this, it's either in May or June, one of our meetings.
Because we're trying to do it June.
Great.
Thank you, Roseanne.
And I think we should just put a fine point on the statement that you made, that our policies are strong. So really, how do we live them?
Celebrate, yeah. And, and we need to, we need to enforce them. Just amongst ourselves, or hold ourselves accountable for, for the, for the enforcement.
So I'm wondering, although it's not a policy that would go to the full board, but whether you, and obviously, you can do this as the chair, but whether you want to share that with the full board?
I think it might be at the meeting, it sounds like that'll be in June, I don't know if it'll be the first or second, we're still trying to slot things in. I'll, I'll just open with what I learned in looking through those policies, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Be labored, but it, it'll tie in nicely with the superintendent's update.
Any. Ailear.
That's great, Michelle, thank you for that update.
Any questions? Awesome, well, I like those agenda items. Speaking of, speaking of reports. There is.
We're here.
Yes. Which reports? Well, we have a couple policies that require, and of course, one, the complaint policy. And is there, are there others? Rachel probably would know this.
Two I know of is the complaint policy, the report, educational equity policy.
The, the climate policy does also.
What, once we get out of cycle?
Yeah.
I know we did have the complaint update or report last year. We'll have it this year. Can we have it before the end of the?
We tend to do it when we have the data through the end of the year, so we wouldn't do it until after the year's over.
This, the calendar year?
No, the, the school year, so June 30.
Okay.
We would do it, we would have the data, the complete data set by June 30, so it should come within 30 days after that.
So it's like an August.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't think this will be super interesting, I mean.
I, I don't, I don't either.
Any other questions?
And Jonathan, I don't need to speak on behalf of your team. So, you're, you're here, but I, the policy does require that.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So the next. Michelle, would you like us to go to the climate application, or should we go to a different topic? You're on mute.
Yeah, it took me a minute to unmute. I'm working on it right now in the meeting, so I can have a, turn it in and get it, get it off my desk. I'm just reviewing it, and where I see an opportunity to make an edit, I'll do so, and I'll let you know verbally when I'm done.
Okay. Talk about it briefly. Roseanne, Danny.
About Danny.
Danny with a Y.
Yeah, the Danny.
Yeah, I usually expect him here, so.
It's a crazy time for students.
So I, I know Michelle's looking at that, but Jonathan, I guess my question for you is, has Danny looked at your version?
I do not know, I, I made the edits yesterday afternoon, so I, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
Can I, can I, as I'm looking at this right now in the meeting, I just want to point out one thing, just, I, I want to be, I want to contribute something meaningful. So when we're asking about expertise, we have like, architecture, education, and business. But what we really want to get from a diverse group of stakeholders is we, we, we want to know their lived experience. So I've added lived experience, even though it's not a profession, because it, it'll, I, I think, I think people, we want to hear lived experience, you know, we want to hear from people that maybe they're not an architect or a, or a business person, but they grew up on an island with rising, rising sea levels. So we, we absolutely want to hear from people, those frontline communities that might not have these like, expertise areas.
Absolutely. No, I, I, I appreciate that matured past.
And I'm not, Jonathan, I know you know this.
No, 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 I know, but I, but I think, I think naming it is important to make sure that it's reflected in there. So I totally hear you, and I'll make sure that, that, that is reflected. But again, I appreciate your, your, you making some notes on there, so that we, we can capture that.
Yeah. It's my pleasure.
Just, just across a standpoint, Jonathan, maybe after Michelle finishes, drops in her comments, any changes she has, then we can run it back through, make sure that Danny with the Danny Cage is okay with it, and then we'll circulate it to the group for the final.
That sounds good.
The final thing, and we should be all good. Is that workable?
Perfect, so let's, let's try to do that in the next 24 to 36 hours, so that, then we can really put that online and, and, you know, send out the message, communication message, and start really promoting, promoting the opportunity.
Yeah, I've been, had people ask me when. There's a whole market for it, so.
Absolutely. And I, I think I mentioned this yesterday, but, and I just got the, the blue ink on the, on the, on the agreement with their new senior advisor, or the new advisor on climate justice. So I'm really excited that they're going to come in, they're, they're currently the director of sustainability for Indiana State University. And so they're gonna, they're, they, they're system thinkers, they're, you know, they've been endorsed and supported by, they were interviewed by the Climate Justice Committee. So our, 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 you know, our stakeholders really elevated her, her voice. So just excited that she's gonna, you know, join the organization and really be able to lift up this committee and, and move this work, move, move this work forward.
That's awesome, that's perfect.
Questions? I just learned today, speaking of climate, that I was using the term climate change, and I just learned that the UN is not using that term anymore, they're using climate crisis. They're also focused on climate justice at that level, so that's something for us to think about, climate justice and anti-racism.
I think that's what our, like, our policy language, well, we're not changing. But I think we actually use that. Okay, so Michelle, you're gonna do that, and we've got a process to get that landed. So the next topic I want to raise is the parent groups in schools fundraising revisions. And Jonathan and Robin and I have had a series of conversations about the engagement. And Jonathan, do you want to, sort of at a high level, describe the type of engagement or the, the engagement process that you're, you've got envisioned?
Absol- absolutely, so, you know, one, one of the things that we've, we continue to hear is a desire, you know, to, to really target some, some voices. And so what we, and we'll send this out maybe tomorrow to, to the committee, or later this week, just this idea of working in the Roosevelt and McDaniel clusters, really targeting families in those communities to really lift up those voices. And so we would do targeted outreach with families and communities there. And so that's one. The second thing is really, so that's the family voice. Then secondly, working with the DSC to lift up student voice and really hear the student perspective, the nuanced perspective of, you know, students that maybe attend schools with foundations and schools that don't, and having that nuanced conversation. So I plan, we plan on working on with this with Chair Brim Edwards, to make sure that, 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 that what we present in front of the, the community, whether it's the, the student or the families, that we have a share, a, a shared agreement, a shared understanding. And the, so that's the second one. So again, student, families, students. And then the third piece is elevating administrator voices. Our administrators, we have an array of administrators, we have administrators who have worked only in title CSI, title, you know, CSI schools that we want to lift up. We also have current administrators who work in CSI, TSI, who also have worked in schools where, you know, fundraising has been lucrative. And so I think we want to be able to lift up principal voices. And so our, our plan, our proposal is to have a series of conversations over the next month, so that when we come back in June, at the next, one of the next policy committee meetings, that we're able to bring all of those voices, all those, all those concepts, all those themes into a conversation, so that we're all sharing from a shared space, a shared knowledge, a shared understanding of what we, what principals have to say about this topic, what administra-, what, what teachers have, or what families have to say, and obviously what staff have to say. So, or, sorry, families, and then what students have to say. We also are proposing a survey, so we know that, again, survey gets, gets at the macro, gets as many voices, you know, easy voices, if you will. And then the, the roundtables, the discussions are really targeting, you know, smaller groups of communities of color, folks that need small spaces to really engage in, in meaningful dialogue. I think what I, what I've shared with Chair Brim Edwards is that, you know, on the 22nd, or next month, you know, on, on the 22nd, or the next committee meeting, is that we would have a deeper discussion about what we heard, what we heard from this committee, and then really begin to redline and create some policy that we can react to as a, as a body, you know, from staff's perspective, from board's perspective. But really, you know, this is, this, this engagement timeline is not meant to extend the conversation, it is meant to tighten the conversation and get clarity about what, you know, what we're hearing over the course of the next month.
Great, thanks for both designing it and describing it today. Jonathan, are there any questions?
No, I really appreciate both the survey and kind of the deep dive and looking for specific voices, I think that's always a great path to go down. And I look forward to sort of having a, a red line to sort of start our conversation with from a well-informed place. So, so thank you very much, Jonathan, that sounds like a really good path forward.
Michelle or Herman?
Nope.
Nope, sounds good to me.
So, but there is one piece of, an assignment. And.
Okay.
And I'm also going to ask the noncommittee members of the board, board members who are noncommittee members, the same question. So there's sort of two types of like, changes that could be made to school-based fundraising. There's like process things, because like, currently it's not even in policy. And then there is like, more specifics about, like, what do we think about it? Yeah, and so what I'd like people to do is focus on the, the second piece. And so I, I put out a straw man of what it could look like with. Focused on foundations and putting a limit, like an overall cap on it, and then increasing the amount, and then having an escalator at, at another level. I think staff had a version that had it in an increase to 40. And so what I'm interested, and we, we'd like to have, I mean, ideally, if there are other ideas that people want to advance, it'd be great to get those into the sort of, the mix of the discussion. So the assignment is, if you have some other point of view, like, I think it's too high, it should be 20, or we need to include field trips as well. Again, not process, but more like buckets and amounts and. So if, if you want to do, if you want to put something into the mix, I would ask that you get it, Jonathan is May 18th. Too late?
No, that works perfectly.
And it's not like you have to draft a policy, but it could just be like, or you could say.
Concepts, ideas, yeah.
I think the current rate is fine. Or I want to do a stair step this way, but you don't need to put it in policy language, just so it's conceptually that you could, like, a group of people, laypeople, could have a discussion about it. Because again, I, you know, put something on the table and we should, if other people have ideas of what they want to do.
I think that's hard for me, because I'm still on the philosophical place of like, how we decide equity. Like, for me, it's really, it's what are we trying to accomplish, what are we trying to fix, what are our values as a board? And that may change if we do 100% matching, or if we do 50% matching. So I'm sort of open to a range of like, systemic things, and we've talked about those in committee, I mean, we've generated a lot of ideas in the committee as well, so I'm not sure if you want me to write down all of those that have come out in our committee discussions, or.
Well, what I, what I would like is things that, like, that you would be, you would be supportive of, that you would like to get a larger group of people to think, to think about.
Yeah.
Because, because I think one of the things that we're a little bit stuck on is, you know, what, what that looks like. So, you know, my, my definition of equity may be one thing, and somebody else may be something, something else. And I think by, I mean, the way that Jonathan has set this up is, it's a discussion, and so it, it's not going to be like, hey, would you vote on this, you know, yes or no, but more like, I mean, we have an overall, like, mission and vision of the district, and I think, you know.
I guess I just want to be sure that if an idea arises based on the information ball we're bringing, that if we hadn't emailed that in by May 18th, that that suddenly doesn't count.
Yeah, so, so Director Lowry, I mean, I appreciate the question, I mean, I think what I would say is, you know, try on the different things for size, right? Like, and share those, you know, share the different t-shirts that you would try on in this, in this scenario, if you will. And I think part of what, why we're asking for it to come on the 18th, or this month, is really that, that we would design some of this engagement and stakeholder around some of these nuances, right? Because I think.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and so I think, so give us, give us all the things that you're willing to try as, as directors, you know, as policymakers, you know, what are your boundaries, what are your limits, if you will, you know, or what are the things that you want to explore? And, you know, and again, and, and so as we think, as we design these engagements, it's really, really, really about trying some of those on for size. And if they might not, and they may not fit in this community, right? And I think that's okay, but I think that's, that's the, that's the little bit of where we're trying to be in the middle of like, between philosophy, to your point, and practicality, right? And so I think, I think it's, it's trying to mirror, it's trying to be balance the two.
Yeah, for, for example, like, it could be, Herman could say, you know, I think we should get rid of the practice altogether. And that could be an idea on the table, like.
Right.
He, he, here's one, that's, here's one definition of equity.
Writing the email, starting the email now to remind myself, my first one is all fundraising ends.
Yeah, I mean, that's one extreme.
Haley, that can't be number one.
People say that, I mean, it's the, I'm going from one end of the spectrum to the other, right? Like, let's try that on, how would that feel in our community?
That's right.
People say we should not have money in education, and I'm like, well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's a great policy decision to, to try on for size.
Yeah.
We may not agree with it, and our community, broader community may not agree with it, you know, but I think until we have it on the table, you know, it's a lot, just a lot of, it's a lot of hearsay, a lot of talk, right?
Yeah, so I'll just write a list of all the things I'm hearing in community, but also the things that I think, and we can engage with those with our public engagement, and then come back and have that inform our discussion.
Yeah, the one thing I would say is have some filter. We don't, we could talk endlessly about it.
Yeah.
And I think, like, we want to be focused on, like, what, I think that's, I think actually that's a good one, just to.
Put out there, because.
The spectrum's like, hey, no holds barred, like, everything goes.
Well, and I did a lot of fundraising at Llewellyn, that was. Well, and I did a lot of fundraising at Llewellyn. That was one of my hats that I wore at that school. And we would constantly have parents say, I think it's immoral that the school does any fundraising. I mean, so that's out there in the community, and there, I've heard people say it's not equity. So I think it's something for us at least to talk about and be clear as a board, what our, what our thoughts are on that. Is it okay? I think it is, but I think that's something to investigate that's important.
So, I guess, is this a place, and I, I don't know, so I, I don't, I, I just want to put that out there. I don't know if this would be an appropriate place. But um, thinking, going back to the conversation that we had around, um, around field trips, um, is this, is this a place where we would want to talk about um, equity of like Roosevelt and like Madison not being able to um, go on field trips because they don't have funding, and how we would come back and support that? Or, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where it would fit, where a conversation like that fits? Because I don't know the answer for that, but I do know um, as a, as a parent on the other end, being told that, you know, if you don't raise the money, then you can't go. But then you have other, it seems, it seems, and I, and I'm doing the quotes because I want to make sure that I, I don't, I'm not saying that this is what's happening, but it seems as though these other more affluent schools aren't having any problems going on field trips, and yet these other schools aren't. And so I don't know, so I'm bringing that up just as a, a point of reference to say, would, is this the type of thing that we want to have ideas around? Or would that be better suited in another place to have a conversation like that?
No, I think that.
Herman, can I, can I say something? I um, I, I mean, it's interesting because it's like, what seems like, I don't feel like I have a good sense of who go, gets to go where. But part of that is like, we need to be maybe informed of, or have a report out on, on, on all of the field trips. We, we do approve field trips, but it would be helpful to go back and see, so we can actually see which schools have opportunities and which ones don't. And it would, it'd also be interesting to correlate those two, to uh, achievement scores.
I'm going to address both of your points, um.
And, and by the way, I think that we have requested a listing of the range of field trips and who's benefiting from those.
Yeah, I think that's in your email inbox.
It's in your inbox, and then,
Thank you.
Then we'd ask,
Obviously, I don't read my emails, so.
Okay, so it's, it's there. So I think we have the data, at least a da- a data set. And then uh, Herman, to your point, yes, I do think, and the way that I would um, potentially phrase this is, um, what would a policy that had equitable access and funding for field trips look like? Or something, something to that.
I agree with Julia a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I'll, I'll rethink how I would, how I would post. I just, what I wanted to make sure is that I'm not putting, I'm not putting something in the wrong place. Like, if this isn't the, as John, I love the um, Jonathan's analogy of trying on shirts. You know, there's just, there's a whole section of shirts that I don't need to go into. Like, I, I don't need to go into the, to the kids' section to try to try on shirts. And so I don't want to go try to try on a shirt that I know I ain't got no business trying to fit into because it's going to look weird. And so I don't want to, I, I don't want to like be trying to present something that really doesn't even belong here. And so that's, that's, that's why I brought that up. So thank you for that clarification.
May, may I ask a clarifying question? So, you know, we, we have the data in our inbox, and the student body funds, is that a, I, is that, I wonder, I'm trying to figure out where that money comes from, the student body funds? And if that has anything to do with, you know, who, how field trips are distributed? Does that make sense? I'm just curious about that part of student body funds.
Um.
Where do they come from?
Students and families.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are, those are mostly, I mean, parent.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Student body funds are raised by the student body in that school. And I think they're intended to be used the same year they're raised.
In what?
I think you're supposed to use them the same year, just to use the funds each year. Like the class, like if you're in an elementary school, for instance, and you raise them for your fourth classroom, that fourth grade classroom is supposed to use them up by the end of the year.
There's no fund balance for student body funds.
Can't carry it over. It has to be used.
I don't, I don't think that's the case, but we are gathering some information about that. I'm not sure that it, this is Robin speaking, sorry. Um, I'm not sure that they can be addressed in the, in this policy, but we will be bringing information back about that for you.
Okay, because, I mean, if, just putting it out there, if those are raised by the student body, and you've got Lincoln and Jefferson, you're going to have a lar- a much different, you know, you've got a, a different fundraising pools, if you will.
Yeah, it's actually not fun.
Some people, some, I mean, I can speak from experience, being a teenager.
A student body.
Yeah, so Michelle, I think it's different from fundraising. So for example, if there's a fee to go on a, on a field trip, you write the ten dollar check, and you give it to the school, um, versus we're going to raise money for the baseball team to go to Arizona over spring break.
Which, so we're going to, we're going to sell candy or whatever. I guess I want to put out there that the income differences would, we would.
Yeah, I mean, so, so Michelle, there's some, I mean, you know, we, we can, I mean, and, and I know the CBRC and other folks have, have asked, you know, us to look at the overall, like, student body account topic. Um, you know, because there are, there are scenarios, right, at the, in, in some school communities where, you know, at the beginning of the school year, uh, you know, the, the, the school will say, you know, give a donation, you know, suggest a donation of, you know, let's just say four hundred dollars per student. You know, when you have a, a student body of two thousand, and it, and I want to be a killer, student, student body accounts are, I think, primarily high school. Uh, and so, you know, let's just say, even if half of, half of a, of a student body of two thousand gives four hundred dollars, a school community has four hundred thousand dollars in their coffers to do an array of activities, right? Um, like field trips, like, you know, uh, supports. I mean, I think that's kind of what Director Green is trying to get at, you know, a little bit. So I think, you know, I think it's an interesting question, I, to Robin's point. You know, I think that's part of the trying shirts on for size. It's like, may, may fit in this policy, or it might be a bigger, uh, broader discussion. Um, but I, I don't think we will know that until we kind of have all the shirts in front of us.
I like the metaphors. Um, it, we're going to be, um, have an audit, this is an audit topic, upcoming audit topic. So um, I'm looking forward to seeing that. But again, I just want to name that, you know, Jefferson High School versus Lincoln High School, and their ability to raise four hundred thousand dollars is, is quite, they're quite, quite different. And I just wonder, when I look at, you know, we look at our achievement gap, we have to wonder, like, what are, what are the variables that go into that, creating that gap? Is it, is it lack of access to, you know, opportunities to go to fun places?
I'm, I'm reading my email, but one other piece that I think we should just be aware of, that's part of school-based fundraising, is like at Cleveland, the students raise funds for up families in need. So at the holidays and at the end of the school year, there's different activities that are more community service. So that is fundraising that could arraign the school, but it's for like community support. Um, and I just, that's another way we raise funds in PPS. And I, I'm wholeheartedly in support of that, that like the Key Club or the Honor Society raises funds that they then donate to the local food bank, or they give to the counselor to support the, the families that struggle. So that's a piece of it.
Why are we not promoting that on every channel, every time we get on? That, that, how awesome that is, that young people are thinking about how they can work to help and support other young people.
And I know like at Llewellyn, they did, they did like clothing drives, and they did canned food drives, and to try to teach the young, the little kids, like, how to care for one another and support community.
I love that. I would never want to stop that.
Yeah.
But we don't have to worry about it. Jonathan will make sure that no matter what we do, that somehow we get to keep that, because that's the magic of Jonathan, so we're good.
Okay, so.
Well, Director Green, I, 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 just really quick, I, one of our, our partners, Jordan Schnitzer, one of our philanthropic partners, actually has a really amazing program, uh, community, uh, community, or, oh my gosh, I'm blanking on the name. Any, anywho, they're in every one of our schools, including Alternatives, where they provide, you know, either a classroom or an elective cl- uh, club, uh, where students actually fundraise, and for every dollar that they raise, Jordan matches it ten to one. And then every dol- and every dollar that is raised in its totality, the students then become philanthropists and give to nonprofits and community partner organizations. So that's in every school, including Roosevelt, including Franklin, McDaniel. Uh, so I would love to, you know, to, to have you come visit and celebrate those students.
Help me, help me um, set that up, Jonathan.
I'll do that.
So one thing I was going to say about student body funds, it's a little bit different from some of these other entities because it's PP, it's PPS. So in, in effect, there probably are some things that the district can do that don't have anything to do with the policy. So um, I just note that for the staff in the, the staff in the room, that it really, there already is, there already is uh, some, could be some ability to um, put some sideboards on it, or more transparency, uh, because those are actually, you know, it's like somebody in this building gets some electronic led- ledger of funds. Liz, did you have something you wanted to raise?
Super boring, but I just want to make sure. I want, I don't have like the ten to one match from Jonathan Schnitzer. I know, Jonathan is all the really interesting juicy stuff. I just wanted to point out on the data about the field trips, that that's just the data that RISC has. So there are RISC-approved field trips, which are a broader set than the board-approved field trips, where a subset of that. There are field trips that happen that just happened at the school that are local, that don't get reported to RISC. So I just want to make sure, when you're trying to think about the universe of field trips, the data you have is the RISC-approved trips. So it will, it, it will tell you an interesting story, but it is not the whole story.
Okay, but those are probably the ones that require some money, wouldn't you, my guess?
I mean, yes, so there's money, and there's also opportunity in act rate. Some of it, there may be things we can solve without a lot of money for those that happen um, more locally, that are just the day trips, the afternoon to the.
So like if Paige's teacher takes them to the art museum on Tri-Met, and they all have their passes, does she doesn't have to go through RISC, or does she?
I cannot articulate exactly what this particular line is. I can get that for you, but I don't want.
But I'm sure like Llewellyn, they used to take walking field trips.
Walking field trips are not.
Yeah.
I could probably give a little bit of an over insight onto that.
Yeah.
The ones that need to go to RISC are ones that are out of state, or where they're in the wilderness, or going to stay overnight somewhere.
Oh.
So there's more details to that, but that's the general.
So and the rest of them are managed at the school level.
So we don't know, speaking of risk.
Yeah, so. Out of, out of town.
Right.
Right, you're not staying in hotels, you're not, I mean, we no longer allow the jet boats.
What?
Yeah, jet boats are not allowed anymore.
Legendary.
That's why the jet boats are allowed.
There, I asked.
The kids walking from the river.
I know. I said, what was the educational purpose of the jet boats? I was told it was to look at the bridges from the underside.
It is.
We did a, we did a third grade tour of the bridges where we laid down on the parkway bridge? No, our, uh, which one?
You did not.
Uh, one of the bridges, and they opened, like, they opened it, but we were lying down on the side where the cars were not on the part that opened. Yeah. Okay. RISC didn't need to know about it?
The little team is kind of getting.
And RISC management didn't flag that? Oh my God.
No, no, RISC management shut down jet boats.
They shut down jet boats, not bridge tours.
Not bridge tours, but that may be next.
Okay, so I think everybody gets the assignment. And I would say, like, try and keep it scoped, like, there'll be some interesting things, but like, do we, we don't, we want to use people's who are participating is um, around the most strategic topics. So um, keep that in mind, and the eighteen.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, I mean, so, you know, try on shirts for size, but you know, make sure that you're not trying to get a small when you're really like a large and extra-large, because.
Oh, Jonathan, you're not supposed to put me out there like that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, the, the, the tightness does not work. No, but I, I mean, and honestly, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think as policymakers, right? Like, let's, let's, let's be, I mean, I think, I think what Julia is trying to say, like, let's be realistic here, like, and, and, and understanding the kind of the, the nuance that, that exists. So act, a- actually, I, I appreciate this conversation so much.
Right fit or wide cut? So uh, everybody get those in, I appreciate that. So we're circling back, because I know, Michelle, you've um, climate, are we, do you have anything you want to add, or have you just sent it to Jonathan?
Um, I think when I close it out, it's going to be saved in the Google Drive. But I can also verbally let you know when I'm done. I'm, I'm almost at the end. I'm just now at the essay questions portion.
So.
Right, yeah, if you can leave your comments there, I would, I will look at them this evening.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we have um, the very first um, item was liability claims. And it's a, speaking of dry and boring.
No, I just am laughing because we were talking about field trips and now we're talking about liability, so.
Now we're talking, exactly.
Nice segue.
So it's policy eight point six zero point zero two one, and this really isn't um, it says discussion, possible discussion or possible action. I think it's possible discussion. So it, it needs to be cleaned up, and um, we were looking at changing the level of um, al- also the, the level that would go to the um, to the board. And one of the things I asked for was just like, what's our, what's our history, um, just sort of a sense, a sense of that? I served on another board where I was convinced, like, the board wasn't getting anything, like, how can we, like, like, what's the threshold? We're not getting anything. And it's sort of like, well, there wasn't really anything. Um, so I think it's just good for board members to get a sense of what, or, or, before we set a threshold, like, and, and maybe, sorry, Liz, I hadn't talked to you about this before, but there's maybe like different thresholds, if it's like something like student-related, like a student misconduct case versus something.
As in, an allegation that a PPS employee engaged in misconduct with a student? Yeah, okay, as opposed to a student misconduct. Failure, so, anyway, we'll, that's another.
Yeah, um, so just to let people know, that's a topic, and um, we'll have some data. And it's, it's mainly a huge cleanup, right? We're removing most of the.
Yeah, it's, it's um, it's cleaning up uh, some language that describes uh, a contingency accounts that don't exist anymore, or, or, uh, board committees that don't exist and haven't existed for years. Um, and then this was last amended in two thousand? So it's, that twenty-five thousand dollar threshold was set in two thousand dollars to the year two thousand.
Yeah.
Currency. So it's, it's just trying to update that, um, to reflect kind of this, to try to create a level, a consistent level of governance that isn't eroded by time and inflation.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we, the other thing we talked about is having some sort of um, so if you have a whole bunch of, of claims, like, below the threshold, like, that there'd be some sort of trigger if it was over a certain amount, like, hey, board members, you should be paying attention because there's, you know.
A thousand complaints. Yeah.
Well, it's fine to have a thousand complaints, but maybe not a thousand settlements.
Right, a thousand settlements.
So there, yes, the settlements are on public record anyway. I think it's trying to figure out, higher in your shoes, you know, what's, what's a good use of time? And is, is a twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's not really something the board needs to weigh in on, you know, it's relative size to the budget, but it, but when do you need to see a collection of those? Now, you do get the reports, but, uh, but this is a different look at that data. Reports, but, uh, but this is a different look at that data, so we've, um, just about done pulling the. Data that Julia was describing. I, I don't think any of it will be terribly surprising in terms of what we poured, what. We ran two different reports, one twenty-five thousand and under, so what are you not seeing now?
Right.
And then one seventy-five thousand, and what would you not see, not have seen if that were seventy-five thousand dollars? So those are the two different.
Yeah, and like I said, I think there's some filters, it's like, you know, every, like, the maintenance gal ran her truck into, like, a parked car. Or what? So like, do we need to see that? No, but if somebody, if we're settling about some sort of employee misconduct, maybe, I mean, depending on.
Yeah, and, and generally, there are exceptions. Amount of the settlement has some correlation to the severity of the allegations. Again, that's not a hard and fast rule, but it's pretty, it's pretty close, so that it, it, it helps, but I, but I hear you.
So exciting upcoming agenda item.
And I think what got posted is, doesn't show the red lines. I just printed this up for you.
Yeah, it doesn't show the red lines. I asked, I asked not to have the red line cuz I wanted to get the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I.
Paper first.
Okay, I was confused cuz I'm like, I don't see any.
I just think as we described, the changes, it might be helpful.
But it's fine.
Yeah, but it's like, I'm not quite sure it was, why it stayed on the agenda. It was mainly cuz I forgot to tell.
Oh, okay, I see. Got it. We'll, we'll do a redo next time. Okay.
Yeah, but I guess I'm just lagging.
Yeah, sorry.
But, yeah, um. Residencies? Oh, we, we could, we could, we could do.
I'm trying to figure out what's, cuz I know, I know we jumped around cuz Michelle scheduled, but where are we, where are we? No, I just love residencies with all of my heart.
So we have two, we have deferred.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that I've just finished the application, so I've hit send on it. It's, it should be in the drive.
I am appreciative that in your last hours with us, that you're helping us get that over the finish line, um, cuz that will allow us to launch it in a really good way. So. There was a topic, uh, and it's actually the next item on the agenda. Sorry, it's not residencies. Um, oh, that's okay. It's citizen involvement process revisions.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And you should have a.
Redline version, right?
Redline version.
Is this different than the version we got last time? Oh, okay. I didn't see any differences, but again, I might.
I don't believe so. I can't, I can't find it.
Okay.
Um, so we, thank you, uh, for pointing that out that we had it last time. Um, there is one new thing. The, so the, in essence, we're updating the language, changing citizen from school, school site councils. And this, this policy, um, in addition to, um, modernizing the language. Also included information about, well, a lot of information. About, um, about site councils, which we don't need quite that much detail because it's already in statute. But it also had information relating to the citizen budget review committee, which has its own charter, so we've taken that out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, Michelle or Director Green, do you have any, um. Comments about this particular policy?
No.
I have nothing either.
Love all the language that takes me back to the nineties when I was on my high school's Twenty First Century Council, cuz of course I was. My super relative in high school was most likely to return as a high school administrator. Or someone shot. Not the most likely to succeed, most likely to return as a high school administrator. So there we go.
Okay, I was gonna say that definitely was not. Um, you?
Definitely was not me.
From an early age. Um, so I was just trying to look up, cuz apparently I didn't print it out, um, because before I, um, ask for.
Do you have a copy of it?
Before I, I ask whether the committee is ready to move it out, I.
Maybe we're talking about something different. You do have the policy? Which one do you want? You said, do you have it? And I thought you.
No, I meant the Tyler. So we have, we had some, we have some, uh, public comment that was.
Oh, yes.
Last night.
It's posted.
Yes, it's posted, um, that was, um, sent to all of us at eleven, eleven thirty. So if you missed it, Michelle, it's.
She wrote back to him.
Oh, that's right. And I was really impressed by that. So.
I just feel like the SEGC, like, the, the district, the redrawing of school boundaries doesn't feel to me like this is about site councils and local schools. I feel like SEGC is a district process, so I don't feel like there's overlap here. That, that was my personal take. I understand what he's trying to do and why he's concerned, but it just feels like this is not the place for it, in my opinion. But I, you know, interested in what other board members think of it.
Yeah, um, so I, I think there's a couple of different concepts he's got in here. Um, the first, um. Well, first of all, I like that people are like looking at our agendas and like sharing their point of view.
Yeah, that's great.
Because.
Excellent.
So. The first paragraph is, um, really a legal interpretation that really isn't, um, applicable to our policies. Is that the right summary?
I was reading the email.
The first, the first paragraph is not really, it's a, it's his legal interpretation about public meetings, which really isn't a poli- is not a policy issue. Okay. Um, but the issue he raises, um.
I mean, I think to be fair, he would like some policy adoption that may extend public meeting-like rules to situations where they may not apply by statute. If I'm reading.
Yeah, I think that's.
And that may be in a different policy.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna get back to your point in a minute. I'm gonna get to your point in a minute. Sorry, I gotta.
No, but I'm just, I agree that I think, I think he has important thoughts. I just don't think this is the policy, but yeah, go ahead.
So I think when he looked at the original policy. The title is citizen involvement process, which is a broad category.
Right.
And.
That was like the nineties name.
Because, because of some of the changes we've made, it's really now focused on site councils.
Right.
Having said that, cuz, um, I am concerned that in my perspective, that, um. The administrative directive, um, wasn't followed. And I would be supportive of putting something into policy around community engagements, around boundary changes and. Because I, I think, I mean, that this is like, in essence, what his issue is, is that we have an AD that it's not a policy and.
So I think that would fit more for me under having a conversation about the student assignment review and school boundary changes policy, not in the site council policy, right? So I think we could have another conversation about a different policy on these matters, but not on this.
And I'm, I'm in agree, I'm in agreement. Um, and I actually think it could just be a, a stand, standalone. And. I don't think, is public meeting guidelines for committees that he references here, is that some, um, public?
Oregon attorney generalism.
It's a PPS.
That's like, but that's not our thing.
Um, it's, this, it's on PPS's website, what he's linked to. Um, it's OR one nine one three two two four. And it's just a review of Oregon public meeting laws from two thousand sixteen. Yeah. So this is, it's, I, he found it somewhere on PPS's website, cuz that, when you click the link, it takes you to a PPS page or a PPS document.
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
It's like something, John.
Um, when he references the, um. I don't know a lot about the, the case that he references. Are you familiar with that? Is that between PPS and.
Around that.
Yes, I haven't, I looked at it a few years ago. The, the, this continues to revolve around to this, the, the committee report. It's recommendation, right? That's a distinction. So it's a slightly different issue than what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The AD doesn't talk about, but I.
Right, um. I have two, two, sort of, two streams of thought about that. One, if there ever is another, and I'm not gonna be pointed to it. SEG, SEGC-like committee that reports to us staff, I do think we should be really thoughtful before it gets set up about how it's structured. Cuz we did have community members coming. For the last several months commenting on what's happening in the SECG to the board. Cuz they, so it was sort of going around.
Yeah, they're not forbidden, I mean, people have rights to share their opinions.
I'm just saying, it's, was confusing to, of what the process was. So I would just say if we did something, my point of view is like, instead of trying to write a policy to. Put a fine point on, on that would be to, if we're gonna set something up, think, think about. What worked last time and what didn't.
I, I wanna echo that. Um, I feel like there's so much we could say about the, the process and, um, it, it kind of became clear to me that. The, well, first of all, that relationship wasn't, wasn't really clear that be- between the Southeast Guiding Coalition. And, and what their role was and, and if staff could make, you know, or is it the board? The other thing was, I feel like the, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I feel like the community, um, we need to remind the community whenever we engage with community, what they're in, like, what the level of influence they have. Um, so, you know, it's, it's one thing to go out and hear from community and it's another thing to say, you know, this is, um. In terms of the spectrum of engagement, this is just on the informed side, that this is not really an empowering side. There's a, a range of activities and the community's influence gets greater depending on what, what level of the spectrum of engagement you're talking about, so. Um, I, I think that would be, it'd be helpful to the community to be more clear about what we're, um, how much influence they can have and how much, um, you know, the decision-making comes down to staff or, or the board.
Well, I think it's really important with Southeast Guiding Coalition to say that Southeast Guiding Coalition was created by the board, right? We, we, and the board passed a charter, so it was a committee we, we brought together, right? So it was at the direction of the board and in fact, I, it may, you know, the superintendent has said that. That may not have been the most important lever, but it was one that the board was passionate about because we really wanna, as Julia has said many times, have robust middle grades experiences for our students. So SEGC was created by the board to do their work, so that's an important, like, relational piece.
Mm-hmm, and, and we, we might have, you know, if we're debriefing, might have, um, done a better job of, um, clarifying. You know, our role and the community's role. And I'm gonna sign off now.
Okay, have a great trip.
Just, so I'm gonna bring back a draft, um. Uh, policy that would be reflective of our engagement around boundary changes. So just.
Look forward to it.
I bet.
Since we're a committee of four, and I know you've done a lot of work rewriting some of these, would there be someone that you might, like, maybe have Director Green be a writing partner with that?
Yeah, uh, I'm always.
Just to kind of increase the.
I'm always down with, um, writing partners. I think they tried to give you this one.
Right, and I, I didn't like the idea of me just writing it on my own. I really think, I like the idea of partnership and collaboration for the writing process, so that.
Well, here's for, for future reference, anytime I say, would you like to do X? It's the assumption that you can ask anybody, tell anybody.
Okay.
So sorry if I wasn't.
No.
I wasn't like, go do this.
Yeah, and I know you and I have a difference of opinion about, like, I, I like the co-creation model and especially since we have such a diverse board to have. I mean, and I know your intent is to bring the policy so we can have the robust discussion then as a catalyst, but it might be helpful to have another voice in the creation of that.
Yeah, um.
Especially since it's a brand-new policy.
Well, actually, it wasn't gonna be a brand-new policy. It's just gonna be a lot, it's in the AD, cuz we already have it, we already have an AD, it's just, um. Maybe it needs to be elevated to a policy. Um, but I think it, I'm always down with that and also anytime anybody wants to, um. Either take the lead or help draft something, um. Just let me know, um, just like Michelle had.
The first one.
Yeah. Okay.
Now that we get to do residencies?
Did you have something you were gonna say, Liz?
No. I just wanted it to be noted that the charter for the Southeast Guiding Coalition existed and defines its roles.
Okay.
Um, okay, so we have two rescission recommendations, um. Mary and Liz, do you wanna give us the overview of why, why we don't need them?
Um, well, I, I'll take the deferred compensation one. Leaves of ab- leaves of absence.
Which is funny cuz it's labeled citizen involvement process revisions on the board books, but when you open it, it's a leave of absence document.
We didn't mean that.
We want them to.
I knew what she meant.
Um, the deferred compensation, I should pull it up, so. Um, it, it's an older policy. It's, we, it's not necessary because it is part of our benefits packet, which is also, I think it was just recently amended by the board. Um, that, let's see, five one oh. Oh, no, I was looking at the other one that.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's, we have in another policy, uh, the employment terms for our non-represented. Paragraph on the benefits package, deferred compensation is part of that benefit package. So any, any changes that would be made to it pursuant to that other policy would come before the board, so it makes this one redundant.
Just a question on deferred comp. Is that paid for by the district or by the person?
The deferred comp?
I mean, it's just like you're electing to defer.
Well, deferred, deferred comp by definition, I think, is from.
Okay.
Is yours.
Yours, yeah.
It's, it's.
But curves has their own, has another.
Okay, but anyway, if there's a change, we'd, we'd approve it anyway.
You would approve it through the other policy.
So we don't need a policy on it. Okay, and what about the other one?
The other one is, uh, leaves of absence for classified personnel, so this is governed by collective bargaining agreements. These leaves are spelled out. Agreements, this policy was last updated in nineteen eighty-seven, so it just, it's.
That was ten.
Well, if it's in the CBA.
It's in the CBA, so we still need a policy on it. It's confusing.
So Herman and Ailey, any?
All good.
Okay, um, great. Herman?
Less for us to translate.
Sorry, I had to, I had to deal with, with something else for a second. I'm good.
Okay, I think, I think, um, you should be okay. And then, um. Policies of public comment as of five hours ago.
Well, there, there are others too that aren't listed here that are.
The one we were supposed to do a second reading for that we didn't, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, I, I, the agenda was built. I assumed that the second reading was gonna happen, so it wasn't.
Yeah, of course.
Of course.
Um, so.
You didn't predict us going till midnight.
So Roseanne, because we'll have. Another policy committee meeting. Before these ones, and my guess is we'll get some comment on the weapons policy potentially. So we should just make sure we keep them on the list.
And just so you know, if you go to the main page, it is. The board policy page, you scroll down, it's all on there, so people should be able to find.
Oh, great. Oh, great. I don't know. I wonder if that's how Tyler found it.
It was a pretty small.
Pardon?
Anyway, no, maybe it's, maybe it's, I don't know.
Like, less clicks through. It's pretty hard. Um okay. Is there anything? Anything else? Or we're just gonna end early? Cuz I'm good with that.
Did we talk about the religious?
Our religious holidays. Do we have?
Oh, I, we have a tentative day of the nineteenth of May, that, that day, except to confirm to students.
Would you like to participate in this?
I, nineteenth of May, what time?
Four o'clock.
It has to be for the students.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, maybe. I have something pending on my calendar. So that might make it better. I'll pencil and see.
Yeah, so the, the update on this is ironically, we scheduled the meeting with the students on a religious holiday.
Which was a holiday.
Only it was like a.
Eat. Yeah. Yes. Well, I mean, just to kind of totally, like, we had a ton of kids out at Grouse on Eve. Right? Because there were a lot of people celebrating, so.
We had a student who might not have been able to attend the.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's, it would be great to have the, I think, I would advocate that we permanently put some of those holidays on the, as no school days in the twenty-three, twenty-four. I think definitely for the twenty-two, twenty-three to have them at least noted so that there's not tests, there's not board meetings.
If you participate in this call.
Then I can do that. Great.
Overarching piece of it is gonna be what the constitutional limitations.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sure as the.
That's fascinating.
Student government.
It's pretty straightforward. It's not gonna be that fascinating, but, but it is something that's very important to keep in mind.
Yes. Uh, okay. Herman, anything for the good of the order?
Nothing that, except, um, it is great to be um with all of you. I that's it. That's all I got.
Nice to be with you too, Director Green. Thank you.
I'm gonna say con law was one of my favorite classes.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna extend the invitation that Herman or Ailey, if you have anything, like, you know, Michelle identified
Yeah.
policy, if you have something that you wanna put on the agenda, feel bring to let us know. With that, there's no public comment. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, guys. It's over.